Good evening, everyone. We will be starting our millage rate public hearing. In fact, this is will be our second one for today. In just a moment, we're giving the Honorable Commissioner Doring, Dr. Doring Williams, an opportunity to get all of her technology in place. We've had a very long and robust day, but we have this on the calendar and we will be moving forward here in just a second. Today is Tuesday, July the 28th, and we are just shortly after the 6:00 p.m. hour, and we're here at 9:03 Main Street in Old Town Conyers, the heart of Rockdale County. And myself and Commissioner Sherri Washington are present and live in the audience here at the Rockdale County Auditorium. Commissioner Dr. Doring Williams, Post Two Commissioner, will be chiming in in just a very quick moment by way of Zoom from a remote location as we are practicing social distancing. And we certainly do appreciate. Let me know when she's she is here. Okay, Commissioner, if you just show your face on the screen or do a thumbs up, I believe it.
I'm here.
Oh, there she is.
I'm here.
Absolutely. Perfect timing and to not prolong our meeting and to move forward because we do have some of our fine citizens who've come out to hear this proceeding and some have already filled out their comment card. So at this point, as I conclude calling the meeting to order, I'll now call up our CFO and Director Roslyn Miller.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
We ready to move forward? All right, let's rock and roll.
Okay, good evening. We're here this evening for the 2020 Millage Rate Hearing. This is for our 2020 budget. It's to cover the funding of our 2020 budget. The revenue, where it goes, our revenue, once we receive it, we have 46.5% goes to our public safety. And then we have about 33% that goes to general government. And general government is Board of Commissioners, Finance, IT, and HR. And then we have 10 for Court Services and 6% Recreation and 4% we have for Transportation. That's what makes up our budget. It makes up our budget of $74.9 million. As I mentioned, the millage rate that will be set August 11th will cover our 2020 budget for $74 million, $74.9 million. Some of the budget highlights invest in the employees, which was compensation model and incentives. We also have included in our 2020 budget, contract for mowing and right-of-way maintenance. 2020 also, this is an election year, so we had calls for our Elections Department. And then we have medical and mental health care calls for the jail. This slide is our tax digest history. 2020's digest did come in at 12% increase from 2019. But as you can see, our 2020 digest is in line with our 2009. The next slide is our millage rate history. As you can see, from 2015 to 2019, the millage rate stayed the same at 20.19. However, this evening, the recommendation is to decrease the millage rate to 18.90. The next slide is our remits and exemptions. The red line represents our host remits, our revenue. The next is the exemption. In a perfect world, to receive 100% exemption from your maintenance and operation from your tax bill for county only, the two lines would be on top of each other. They parallel. But as you can see, that the host exemption line item is growing at a higher rate than our revenue. For 2020, for the tax year 2020, the proposal is to have our host exemption at 60%. Last year, it was 70. Again, our proposed millage rate is 18.19, which would, okay. Our proposed millage rate is 18.9, which would balance our budget. It would not, we would not have to go into our fund balance, use our reserve, or there would be no surplus. What's projected is the revenue received from the millage rate of 18.90 would generate the $74.9 million that we need to balance our 2020 budget. Next is our timeline. This morning was our first public hearing. Today, this evening is our second at 6:00 p.m. Our next, we're going to have three public hearings. So our next public hearing will be August 11th at 9:30, and then the setting of the millage rate would be August 11th at 10:00 a.m. Are there any questions?
So I'm going to, well, first of all, thank you, Director Miller. Before we go to board comment, Commissioner Washington, do you have any questions at this time?
How much is in our reserve?
We have 30,000, I mean, 30 million.
And do you know how much is the most that we've gone into reserve to balance the budget?
The most, it was, it's been a few years, and it was about 1.6 million. It's been over five years, though.
And if we use the rollback rate, it was about $3 million that we would go into reserve?
That is correct.
But that would minimize the amount of tax increase for this year from, for the residents?
That is correct. By using the rollback rate, it's, we will receive the same amount of revenue as we did last year. And if their, if their property value didn't increase significantly, they would not see a big increase. Because if you continue with the host, if you reduce the host to 60.
Commissioner Williams?
So I'm thinking about our renters. Because even a little appreciation in the value of those homes can translate into a fairly large tax increase. And they don't have, the landlord, the owner of the property does not have the benefit of the host. And so then it gets passed on to the renter. So the dilemma is, if we want to go into fund balance again, which we have not had to do and which is not beneficial for our financial rating. So there's, there's lots to think about. I'm glad there's a couple more weeks to be thinking about all of those things.
Well, can I make another comment? I, I think that, did you hear, did you give me?
I did hear that.
Okay. Well, if, my thoughts about fund balance at this point, and I'm open to discussion, you know, the community as a whole is going through a lot right now. We are, you know, people are still woefully unemployed. There are many people that, and my house is affected. My niece hasn't worked since the beginning of COVID because she worked for the airlines. There's many people in the same situation. And even if they are renters or even if they were just making their mortgage, any amount of tax increase at this time would be detrimental to the people of Rockdale County. I'm a firm believer that savings is just for these times when, when the entire world is experiencing economic, an economic downturn. And, and if there's any way that we can do something to alleviate a problem from, for the vast majority of our constituents, this time going into fund balance might be necessary. So that's where, that's my thinking on this entire thing. But like I said, I am open to discussion and more professional guidance.
So let me, go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I think, my feelings are very similar to Commissioner Washington's. However, I'd like to get a projection down the road because we know we can't go into fund balance every year.
Absolutely not.
If it's a one-time thing, it's an investment in our people. But we need to know what the consequences of that are next year and the next year and the next year. You know, does that mean we have to raise taxes a whole lot next year? Or, you know, what, what does that mean? But I, I agree, and that's why I brought up the issue about renters. Because many of our renters are those who have lost their jobs or who work in those essential jobs that, that are not high-paying jobs. And, you know, we want to be mindful of them. So, you know, I, I would like to see what the long-term projections are.
And not only that, I would like to see more education on next year, starting way before now. I know we've been in COVID, but what it means if we do have to have a higher millage rate so that people can start getting prepared long before these notices go out? What, what we're thinking, what we're projecting, and what that's going to mean to their mortgages, their rent, everything, so that people can start being prepared? If, if that's the route we take.
So.
I agree. I like that idea of starting that millage rate discussion earlier in the year if we can.
So let me say this. Thank you, Commissioners. Certainly, the hearings are more for the general public to come in and express and explain to us their sentiments. I think we'll, we will certainly have some continued opportunity behind the scenes to be educated and informed from our CFO, our Tax Assessor's Office. And we can do more research and we can kind of look at many different options. I also agree that Commissioner Washington made a point about there needs to be more education to our general public about how this process actually worked and how we end up where we are each and every year. Honestly, that was the plan, but COVID, and I hate to say that again, but it's the truth. COVID changed the face of that because we were planning to do a lot more educating with our general public through public relations and other mediums to make sure that the, the public was aware. January, February, then the whole world changed right there in the middle of March, and we were trying to focus on saving lives and how we could keep the county operating and up and running. But that's not to negate or to discount the importance as we continue to move forward. What are our options? And even in this process, so we've got another hearing that's coming up, so there's enough time behind the scenes for both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams to identify some time in their schedules and their calendars to communicate with the Finance Department and Director Miller, communicate with the Chief Tax Assessor, and get that part as relate to them. I want to yield at this point because I want to hear from the public in terms of their thoughts because they had an opportunity this morning. They're here this afternoon, this evening for an opportunity, and we're going to give them another opportunity on the 11th. On the 11th. So at this point, thank you, Director Miller. Thank you, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams. I like to go ahead and hear from the public because I do believe, Commissioners, that upon us hearing from the public, we will, that will allow us to be able to factor in a lot of our processing of thoughts to make a final decision as we prepare for August the 11th. So at this time, I'm going to call up Mr. and Mrs. Stephen McMullin. Come on up, Mr. and Mrs. McMullin. Thank you so much, and thank you for taking the time out of your schedules to come out and share with your Board of Commissioners about how you feel concerning the, the millage rate. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us. I'm Stephen McMullin. This is my wife Andrea McMullin. I'm with Transplant to the state of Georgia. She's from Louisiana, I'm from New York. Looking in Atlanta area to move. We went to Fulton County, we went to different counties. The best county that we came up with was Rockdale County. One of the, was the taxes, was the taxes. Also, Commissioner, we heard you in a debate. And after the debate, we left, we went home, we discussed it, and we put our full support behind you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir. And sitting home, we sat home and we're, we're in a pandemic, and we see that there's a tax milage and, and this and that's going on. Our home is valued at 360, so it is a significant. We looked at that and we said, well, you know, I, I know this has been on your agenda for a while and it's been going on, but a pandemic is here. And I would ask at the board and I would ask the elected officials to think about it. I think one of the Commissioners said earlier, it is a struggle for a lot of people. And I'm saying timing is everything. And if you would just take the process and just look at what's going on out there. If, if my mortgage company could give me a break and my car companies can give me a break, and it's going around that we need some kind of help. And I would say that I hope, hopefully, that, that you could sit back and say, maybe this year, something could be done to help us out. Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. McMullin, again, thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time. We appreciate you choosing Rockdale. Yes, indeed. And I heard all of those reasons, a few of those reasons that factored into your choice of Rockdale County. And you've done a great job articulating your thoughts this evening. And all three of us hear you. We hear you loud and clear, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. And then also, I am married, and being a married man, I have to let my wife speak because if I don't, I'm going to get it when I get home.
Well, you won't be able to get back to the house. There won't be no home, won't be no home. Ms. McMullin?
Yes, hello and greetings, everyone. So like my husband said, we are new to the area. And I think the one thing that I was surprised about is that not only do we pay county taxes, we pay city taxes. And it's significant. And so one of the questions that I had, I don't know if the Finance Manager is here, is I want to understand this host system where you said that the revenues were separating and that's, I'm assuming that's a loss? And, and how does that line up with the millage rate going down? So that was some confusion I got from the presentation to see what is the ask? Is the ask that you want to reduce the millage rate would mean our taxes go down and then go into the reserves? Or is it the, the host goes up or the host reserve go down? I wasn't right, quite sure what the ask was.
So Ms. McMullin, let me tell you. First of all, I want to give you a round of applause for being bold and brave enough to say what you didn't know because there's a whole lot of citizens that really don't know or they're confused or there's a misunderstanding. I want to encourage you to get Director Miller's business card. She's going to give you her card, and she's going to set up an opportunity so you can get either, either through Zoom or telephone or in person or however y'all work it out that you're comfortable with. But she's going to take an opportunity to educate you about what needs to happen.
Perfect.
Okay?
Well, thank you so much.
No, thank you all. Thank you so much. Next up, we'll call Mr. Larry Cox. Come on up, Larry. You'll need to put a little pep in your step, Larry.
I'm telling you what, I couldn't see good. I got to take this off, I fogged up. I come, Mr. Chairman, I come before this board today to ask you to consider the difficult times the taxpayers of Rockdale County will endure this coming year. With the COVID-19 virus lurking among us, there is only one thing that is certain, uncertainty. I will ask this board to consider two suggestions this evening.
Okay.
First, I would like this board to consider adopting the rollback millage rate and keeping taxes at the same dollar value as last year, as I had heard Commissioner Washington mention. The second option I would like to mention is that I would like for the board to consider forfeiting its 20% of the host tax and applying that 20% toward tax reduction. I think either one of these plans would be a good plan and something I think that the board should look at. The taxpayers of Rockdale County are going to be hit extremely hard with taxes increases this year. When you consider the Board of Commission, the Board of Education, and the City of Conyers have all raised taxes this year when we are facing this unprecedented times in our lives. Commissioner Washington mentioned that savings are for emergencies, and they are for situations just like this. And I commend her for having those thoughts because I wholeheartedly agree. That's what my savings are for, and that's what anyone else's savings are for. They're for emergency situations. And I think at this time, the citizens of Rockdale County would actually be grateful to have tax relief and know that their savings would be used for a good cause, and that cause would be to be given them relief. And they would understand that they wouldn't expect us to dip into savings often or many times. But like we say, this is unprecedented times. The last time we can go back to this type of incident or happened is 1918 with the Spanish Flu. And if anyone does any research and they look at it, the Spanish Flu of 1918 wasn't just 1918. It lasted from 1918 to 1921. And we are in uncertain times now. We don't know how long this COVID is going to be lurking around. We don't know if there's going to be a vaccine or a cure or if there's going to be any, any type of medications that treat this effectively. So we have to be vigilant. We have to monitor. And as government, it is government's job to do right by the people. And at this time, doing right by the people would be doing one of these two things that I suggested today. I thank you for listening to me. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your consideration.
Larry Cox, thank you so much, and thank you too for taking time out of your schedule. Mr. Cox, I'm going to ask that you do something for the board. You have all three of our email address, and you've already put your plan together. I'd like for you, because we are really in, the board is in robust conversation about how we're going to move forward. We are highly interested in getting your point-by-point recommendations and suggestions. Would you please immediately go ahead and email that to the three of us? I look forward to receiving it along with Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams.
Can I say one thing?
Please, Commissioner.
Um, I just want to be clear that this board has not set the millage rate yet. So at this point, there is no increase in taxes.
Right.
And that, I just want to make everybody understand that we have not increased taxes yet.
Right. We, thank you, Commissioner. We, we have not put the cart before the horse. We're having a hearing regardless of what you may have heard on the street or read in the paper. We're going through the process, and the process is to hear from the citizens of Rockdale County. That was a very good point there, Commissioner Washington. We have not made a decision. We're going to continue to hear from the residents and the citizens of Rockdale County. Thank you so much. Next up is Ms. Helena Kelly, Kelly. All right, come on up, ma'am.
I pretty much agree with what the others have said. But this year, the assessments, property assessments went up high, at least mine did. And then the BOE, the Board of Education, I think if I'm not wrong, they raised their, by 12.2% the property tax. That is a lot, especially on the COVID year. And now, I am very cynical. When, when people think about raising taxes, it usually happens. I know you are saying it hasn't happened yet. So I wish you would think of tightening belts like we all have to do instead of raising taxes. Thank you. Oh, and Director Miller, it would have been nice if you would have answered Mrs. McMillan's question right here so that we could hear the answer too without calling her.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, all right. I think I have all of the public comments.
Do we have any other public comments?
Okay, all right. That wraps us up in terms of public comment. Are there any final board comments? And I'll start with you, Commissioner Washington.
To address the sentiment that we have not raised taxes yet, I think I, I hope that I was clear in iterating that my sentiment this year is probably to, to minimize any amount of tax increase due to the nature of what we're going through as a community. I am open to, I still have to listen because my, my duty, what I'm sworn to do is do what's in the best interest of the county as a whole. But I do understand that if we hurt the citizens of Rockdale County, then that's not necessarily what's in the best interest of the county. Somebody said maybe earlier today that, you know, when you're an elected official, you have to do what's often hard. So any decision that we make regarding this millage rate is, is a difficult decision because, as Dr. Williams said, if we go into our reserve, that's not good necessarily the best interest of the county because we are adversely affecting our credit rating. So we have to look at everything. But at this point, I, we, we are very mindful, even prayerful of what we're going to do moving forward with this millage rate.
Commissioner Williams, any last comments?
Just, I echo what Commissioner Washington said and, and what our citizens have said tonight. I think we're in some really unusual times with the pandemic. And I, I think we need to really look at everything. I like to look at things in the big holistic picture, and that's why I said I want, I want to find out what the consequences of going into our fund balance this year means for next year. Not that we wouldn't do that, but that if we do it, we know full well what will happen next so that we have all the information and we're not next year caught off guard by what, what we might have to do. So I'm, I'm looking forward to the next two weeks of gathering more information and one more public hearing before we make a decision.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Washington. And thank you to all of you all who came out tonight to be a part of the public hearing regarding our millage rate. Again, we have not made a decision at this point. This is a part of the, every year, we're in the same process. We, we are, we're, we're governed by law that we have to go through this process every year. So we're not putting the cart before the horse. This time around is totally different because of where we are. And I think everybody clearly understands that. This COVID-19 and pandemic has, has changed the entire scope of how we do business, how we think, how we plan and prepare. At the end of the day, the safety of our citizens here in Rockdale County is always first and foremost. And, and in addition to that, keeping the government offices up and running in the areas that are needed to make sure that we provide the best delivery of services to the citizens of Rockdale County. to the citizens of Rockdale County. We never want to deplete our savings or our contingency fund. But however, this is as stated. You have a rainy day or backup fund for rainy day times. And we're, it's storming right now. So, so we are taking all of that into deep consideration. We're thinking about today, and we're not going to stop thinking about tomorrow because we have to. And as tough of a decision that it is, we're going to make the decisions that's in the best interest of Rockdale County. So I'll ask that you all be, be prayerful for the county as a whole, for this board. I certainly ask that all of you all be safe in your goings and comings and continue to practice social distancing. Wear the mask, six feet apart, washing your hands, and all of those things that will keep us safe. So again, thank you. Our next, give us the date and time one more time, if you would, Director Rellis, of the next upcoming milage rate.
Mr. Chairman, the next public hearing will be on Tuesday, August 11th at 9:30 in this same auditorium and also via Facebook.
Okay. All right. Is there a need? I do believe there's a need to go into executive session on some other matters. Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, you want to call that need?
I thought we were just in recess. From this, I could say. So do we have to call it again if we're in recess?
For a point of clarity, you're absolutely right. We're, there's no need to call. We can just move right back into that because we were at a recess during that time. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, this ends our milage rate hearing. This portion of the milage rate hearing is adjourned at this time. We'll see you on August the 11th. Thank you and good evening. Happy Tuesday. Stay safe.